All right, well, welcome everybody um to this town hall. I have to admit, we were we were pretty excited about our regularly regular scheduling scheduled program, which this is the normal time slot of our open payments. Huddle, which are our every two months, community calls, which we usually go a little bit deeper into an aspect. We have special guests. We have topics. It was gonna be, we were gonna be doing a researchers roundtable. Where we're inviting, I think through four or five different researchers that had worked in the ecosystem and then done projects and then done, you know, some research or some UX and UXI design research, so on and so forth. To talk about their work and to share with you all and to and to build together, but obviously with the news of of coil and some changes to the ecosystem and we already had this time booked, we figured we would change the the topic and 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 come right at this. And start having an open conversation because I know people definitely have questions and they you know, have different implications about their work and what you're you're working on. Um, we will return to our regularly scheduled program of our community engagements and we will be rescheduling the researchers roundtable. So we are not, we, we were actually very excited about that one. And so we won't, we're just pausing it for the time being as we talk about stuff that's a little bit more timely. Um, all right. And with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Interledger Foundation's Executive Director, Brianna Marbury. He's going to talk about some of the things moving forward and then we will have, you know, answer some of your questions from the community space and social media and then that you might have here. And hopefully build some new understandings of some ways forward and ways to participate with the knowledge that we are not going to have all slash many of the answers today, but we do view all of you and the community at large as a way that we will figure them out together. So Brianna.
Uh, thanks, Chris, and thank you, everyone for being here today. Look forward to having an open discussion with you about what's next. Um, so as I said in our statement before, and and as I said in our meeting yesterday, the Interledger Foundation is independent and we always have been independent from coil. Even though they were in the same ecosystem that we were in a community about open standards and protocols. Um coil was built on the Interledger Protocol, which is an open standard. And this means as a community, as a community, we can continue to build on those foundations and create a stronger ecosystem moving forward. What happens next is left to be determined. We understand that a lot of your projects were dependent on coil and web monetization. We recognize that. And we want to make sure this has the least effect on you as possible. So I'll be working with the team over the next couple of weeks to see how exactly we can fill the gap of coil with you having the least impact as possible. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Chris. And so we can start our discussion about what this means and where do we go from here?
Thank you, Brianna. Um, and as Brianna said, you know, it's going to take some time um and and to sort some of this out. So we do ask for patience and and participation, quite frankly, as we move forward. And the first step was that was having this conversation. We've started to collect some of your questions. I see actually in the public note taking doc, people are taking notes and they're adding their questions and comments. That isn't, that is amazing. So continue to do that. We're going to start looking at some questions. That rate were raised through the community space. So these are the ones that kind of surface quick. I think that that probably will help answer a bunch of things, but also feel free to jump in if we need to stay with one of these topics, we certainly can. I'll be relying on my colleagues to just even open their mic and pause me if someone wants to talk. So use the raise hand if you want to say something at some point or in some way. Maybe at Aisha in the chat who's monitoring that. So let me start out with some of those questions. Um, one was, are you aware of the reasons behind coil shutting down its operation? Was it related to technical issues or business adoption or timing or market fit? Um, the real baseline answer there is that as an independent organization, we have, we don't have oversight or insight into what the reasons are. As they were being made or now afterwards, we're of course, working with them to think about what happens and the implications. But this wasn't something that we were, you know, a part of any kind of decision making process, nor did it influence our strategic positions often. What we really are worried about is what this means for the work of web monetization. And we believe that they're demonstrated through most of y'all's work and the work in the broader ecosystem. There is, there is still forward momentum on that. There is still some exciting pieces that can be pulled up, but we do want to stress that as an independent organization, we did not have, this was not a coordinated effort or something that, you know, we had control over. What we do have control over now, though, is what happens to the web monetization standard? What happens in the work and how, more importantly, do we foster and facilitate and support the growth of this ecosystem? So we, that that role remains. And in fact, I think in some ways becomes a little bit more centralized. Pausing, just in case anyone's going to open a mic. And but if not, I'll continue on. Uh, another question is why is coil transferring assets to ILF?
Um, I can take that question.
Yeah, what?
I can take that question, Chris.
Of course.
Um, so coil is transferring their assets to ILF because they want the work of web monetization to continue. Um, and so it only makes sense. They're, they're really a proponent of this, even though coil is closing operations. They're really proponents and really believe in um what they were doing before with web monetization. And so they're donating their assets to the foundation so that we can continue this work. And yeah.
Uh, so Brianna.
Yes.
Sorry. So when you say the assets, does that mean the like everything that coil had? So people paying like five dollars a month to um get that kind of subscription? Is it that part or is it more like the technical assets?
It's more like the technical assets. So the subscriptions, no, they're, they're not going to be transferring that over to the foundation. The subscription service will no longer, no longer continue.
Thank you.
And if we, we are, we have to decide if that's something that we want to do, like the foundation or subsidiary having that. Do we want to um help spin up another organization that's in the ecosystem to be a web monetization provider? Do we want to do several? That's something that we, we have to decide in the, in the coming uh weeks.
All right. Thank you. A good example of just breaking in and doing a follow up. So thanks, Adam, for that. Um. So the other question that came up in a few different versions of this is what about the solutions that we have built already, which I think is basically what about the stuff that we've already worked on that many of you use interleger funds to build and to support? What happens to that? Uh, and the one thing that I, the one thing that I want to say right off the bat is that I don't think anybody should disable anything that they've implemented in terms of web monetization. This is where actually this is why we built with standards. This is why this technology was built on open standards and open protocols. So that companies, projects, initiatives could come and go, but the work in sort of building these fundamental new open payments, open financial tooling on using the internet is so that these can grow regardless of what companies come and go or what initiatives come and go. So I think in some ways what's gone on here is a validation and a strengthening of the open protocol and open standards approach to this work, which Stefan and coil kicked off. And that's, you know, if you want to think about legacy, that really is the legacy that this leaves is that all of this continues to work. And so for you all that have been implemented some version of web monetization on your site, on your platforms, on your content, on your tools, et cetera. I would say there's no reason to go and take that off. Hopefully, there will be other solutions that come on. We'll be working towards helping to think about and resource and drive what those might be. We always knew that we needed more than just one. It's a little unfortunate that we're in a situation where we kind of got caught in that reality. But what you see when you have, when there is just one, um, but all of your projects are that are web monetized are ready and able to receive the next version of people using this technology, whether that's a digital wallet, whether that's a new web monetization service provider. So I don't think there's any real need to go and disable this functionality on your work. Though the one, the one thing I would say is, of course, you're going to have to go and change some of the onboarding or the, the sort of language where you say, go get a coil account, et cetera, et cetera. Of course, there's some messaging and some marketing and and probably some onboarding pathways that might change, but I would really urge you to keep the technology active, even if it's a bit dormant. Web monetization isn't broken from the uh implementation side, from the receiver side, from the producer side. It just has no company right now facilitating that consumer layer that's going to be able to activate that. So I think it's important to understand that piece. And in fact, and I'm going to, you know, I'll give you a quick 30 second heads up, Alex. Uh, on our ILF team, in fact, you were uh just getting ready to release a new version of the web monetization spec. Um, that really has all stakeholders excited, has them potentially new stakeholders excited. And I think really shows some positive momentum that this technology and the proposed standard is advancing and improving. So Alex, do you want to?
Oh, before we, before we go to Alex, Allison, you had a question. Can you elaborate on what you mean by um the ass, the assets going to increase through the ILF?
No, I was just curious whether the, the assets that's being transferred to ILF in turn will become part of a fund to keep dedicating attention towards web monetization. And maybe those were increase in time through the ILF, through other resources. It was more of a curi- curiosity.
Um, when we talk about assets, we mean um like the technical and IP. We don't mean like funds, like actual money. So, uh, but we do plan on continuing the work with web monetization going forward. All right.
Um, just a quick question for Chris. Um, with um, when we're talking about, you know, getting it out to our communities about the fact that they should keep their, their, their assets web monetized. For a good chunk of users, that's through WordPress and through the plugins. Um, will coils plugins still continue to work? Uh, or should we be getting messaging out there to sort of push people towards pipe? The, the, the new pipe web monetization plugin?
Um, I'll take that. So coil is transfer, as part of the asset scroll is, is donating to the foundation is the WordPress extension and we plan on supporting the WordPress extension, same as the uh actual extension, because we feel like those are tied together. It's part of the developer experience of making it be web monetized. And the code inside of that extension has nothing coral specific to it. It's actually pure web visualization. So we'll continue to to maintain that.
Thank you.
Well, Alex, you might as well talk about the updated spec now. That kind of is actually a good transition.
That's a good transition. So the updated spec, so ever since we went to T-PAC late last year and we got Google interested in the extension, interested enough in the ex, in web visualization to allow us to put it in Chrome behind the flag, we've kept a close eye and worked with them on the, on the spec. We've recently made the new change that aligns the way currency is represented in web monetization to the way currency is represented in a somehow relate somewhat related uh web API, the payment handler API. And we made that change. Google actually reviewed it and they're very happy with it. And we are literally, I think me and Sabine still have to review the the last version of the spec, but no, Sabine did, Sabine did it this morning, right? So we messaged it this morning. And the last one to put my seal on it. But after that, we are ready to release the spec with the new change. Google was very happy with it. Uh, we are still working with the extension to update the extension to actually reflect the new spec. And after that, we're going to publish the new one. Um, and and more uh more happy news. In Galia, one of the, the people responsible for putting web visualization into uh into Chrome have uh found a resource for us to use to start working on putting web visualization into Chrome behind the flag. So that work should start soonish as well. And that's all for the, for the good news.
All right. So thank you, Alex. We're probably going back to you again a little bit. Um.
There was a hand raised. Did someone have their hand raised? I think they unraised their hand.
Okay. Um. What support is available if my solution doesn't work before an alternative coil is available? Um. So I'll, I'll give you the, I'll give you the hard answer first. There isn't overt support uh in a way that comes in right away when once coil goes away. Um, you know, now that I'm talking support again on the consumer side, there's nothing that's necessarily going to replace those customers or release, replace that consumer technology to engage. Um, and I really want to stress that this isn't about you as producers or you as platforms or however you're using it on that side of the coin. It's still completely viable, is still going to get serviced, is still going to get updated. The ecosystem is going to grow and the technology is going to grow. It's on the consumer side that those gaps need new solutions, more players will need to emerge. So I just want to be clear about that, but there's not, I think it's March 15th or March 30th. I don't remember right off the top of my head, when coil will cease to to be operational, there is not going to be an immediate replacement for that service. And so um, if you've been relying on that income, which, you know, quite frankly, I, I don't think many of you were. I think one of the things that we've learned is through, uh, you know, some gaps in the ecosystem and just complexity of use and the still emergent nature of the technology. You know, nobody was funding large swaths of their work through web monetization. Some are getting close and and I think a lot of you have done amazing work to push that forward. But hopefully this isn't going to be, you know, a massive hit into anyone's immediate revenue stream that can't bridge to what may or may not come next. Um, so I kind of wanted to start with just that hard reality. Um. The, the more positive take is though that this is what we're looking to advance. So our grant making, how we look at funds, how we work with you all in community to build new solutions, to share solutions across that work just continues. Um, in fact, I think probably strengthens and becomes more intentional about how we might do grant making or how we might do programs or how we might make strategic partnerships that advance that or that start to make up these gaps and not just make up the gaps, but actually grow the ecosystem, right? You know, it's not just about filling what was now gone. It's about continuing the forward momentum. And so um, I'd say with that, I actually, that's funny, Adrian, I'm going to go to you right in two seconds. Because, you know, one thing that we're actually pretty, another thing that we're excited to talk about is that we, you know, I think as of just recently, hot off the presses, um, and we'll be talking about this with more of a public announcement in the coming weeks. We've actually entered into a strategic partnership with Fineboss, which is really the first, you know, world's ILP enabled uh sort of non crypto backed wallet. Um, and what this will do, and Adrian can go into this a little bit deeper when I hand it off to him. Um, but basically what we're doing is we're subsidizing uh the fees for Fineboss to acquire new users. The fees that might go to those users in a typical scenario as well as the, the fees and in financing to look into new regions and new locales and activating those. When Fineboss launches, it'll be US dollars, US only, but they have a pretty aggressive plan to go and activate new locations. And so we'll basically be subsidizing that work. Um, and which means subsidizing you and y'all and your audiences, at least in the regions, you know, as they, they exist or they come online. To actually have a real ILP digital wallet that will give you payment pointers, that will pay payment pointer to payment pointer and basically opens up open payments in the browser. And in fact, I think in some cases, this actually is beneficial to the web monetization rails that you already have in many of your projects. So that's an exciting bit of news. Um, been in the works for a while, wasn't reactive, uh, but it was well timed. And with, I'll hand it over to Adrian, the CEO of Fineboss.
Thanks, Chris. Um, yeah, Tiffany not reactive. In fact, yeah, yeah, there's a bunch of things I want to say. So apologies, interrupt me if I'm, if I'm taking too long, too much time. Um. I think on the, on, on the, the, on that point, you know, part of the reason we started Fineboss was that the four of us who were at coil uh had been discussing within the company at least two years ago, the fact that more intelligently enabled wallets were essential to the ecosystem. I mean, this is not something that's news to anybody. Um, and I want to just point out one thing with the coil model that is important to be aware of. So part of what was, was holding coil back um was the fact that coil is not a money transmitter. Coil's not a bank. They're not a wallet that's able to move money. And so any web monetization that coil was doing was coil paying the end users. So it's just a business making payments to individuals with their own money. Um, you know, basically it was a transaction where coil was buying content from websites. So when a coil user visited a website, coil was buying some content from that website. Uh, so that their users could, you know, get that benefit. Um, and that's, that's really important nuance because what we did over, I want to say at least two years ago was build tipping into the coil extension. We wanted to make it possible for people to send one off tips. Um, you know, send money. And the reason we couldn't do that is because as soon as a coil user is sending money to the website and coils an intermediary coil becomes a money transmitter. And coil, coil couldn't be a money transmitter. And, and that was part of the motivation for spinning out pain balls and actually creating a wallet that could do that. And that's always been part of the plan for us is to facilitate that. So I think it's important to realize that the model will be different here, that what we want to enable is that somebody has an account with Fainbus can send money to somebody else who has an account with Fainbus. It's not our money getting sent to anybody. So I wouldn't see us as a drop in replacement for coil, but I would see us as infrastructure that allows other people to become replacements for coil, which didn't exist before. So that's something to bear in mind. If anybody wants to be the next web monetization provider and they're ready to go live before the end of March, let us know. Uh, we could make it happen. It would be US restricted. Um, because that's where we have licensed partners that can operate. But we've already done the work with our licensed partners to make sure that that use case is something they can support. We can open a business account for somebody that wants to be a web monetization provider. They can put money in uh to that business account and they can disperse it via, you know, web monetization payments to other Fainbus users. You know, definitely before the end of March, if we can, if we can get it all the, you know, everything lined up correctly. So, so you know, if that's you, if you're on this call and that's you, bear that in mind. Let me know that that's what you want to do. Let's talk about how we can make that happen. I understand it's frustrating to A, have it limited to the US and B, have it kind of closed loop within Fainbus initially. We're doing what we can to solve for that. So as Chris pointed out, you know, spreading into different jurisdictions. It's a major undertaking every time. Uh, you know, there's a reason that, for example, PayPal is not available in some countries after having existed for decades. It's, it's really hard. We have to find a financial services partner in each country and so on. So our hope is that we don't have to go live in every country. Our hope is that other people in this community have a country where they want to, you know, target uh where they want to, want to get set up. And they do the work that's applicable in that local jurisdiction to get the license or get the partner who has the license that they can build on. And, and you know, we've learned a lot of lessons over the last 18 months about how to go about doing that and what it entails. So happy to try and be helpful. Um, and if you can do that grunt work and you can get set up, then I think, you know, us being able to send payments to you, your users, payment pointers and vice versa, that should be goal number one. The interoperability pieces, this is what this is all about, right? That we have, we have a wallet, we can issue payment pointers, somebody else has a wallet, they can issue payment pointers and we can send money to one another. Uh, and, and then we unlock all of these use cases. So um, I just want to, yeah, I, I've kind of gone back to front on what I wanted to say, just, just to follow on from what Chris said. I think another important point I want to make is uh interoperability and open standards are hard. Uh, I've been doing this since I joined Ripple in 2015. Um. I think we've learned a lot along the way. I think the coil closing down is evidence that there's some stuff we were doing that doesn't work. And we need to rethink it. Some of it, we already knew about it. We, we're already trying to fix and it's just unfortunate timing. Um, I think the new web monetization spec is a massive step forward. Uh, but I think there's an opportunity here for us to all look at how web monetization works, what use cases we want to support, what does and doesn't work. And, and you know, be creative, think about how we could, you know, how we could adjust or, or better serve the market. Uh, I think someone made the comment about product market fit. Coil didn't find that is my, is my take. You know, there were not enough people signing up to get a close subscription to pay um for streaming content. And it's really hard to find product market fit when you're trying to build a two sided market. It's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's near impossible. So uh, you know, we, I think we've got to be creative about ways we solve that problem as a community. Uh, we certainly keen to try and do our part as the sort of infrastructure or facilitator and work with others to do the same. Um, I think, yeah, that we, we, we have to be creative there. The, the reality is interoperability is not a strong incentive. No, nobody out there goes, oh, I, I can't wait to be interoperable with everyone else. I know, you know, for us at, at Ripple, when we started on the intelligible project and, and then at coil, you know, we're all believers in openness and interoperability, and that's a big piece of the inter, intelligible mission. But it's, it's not a commercial incentive. If you've got a, if you've got a market, you've got a whole bunch of users. Making your users available to your competitors through interoperability is, is not something you, you're going to dive into, you know, feet first, just because it comes along. We've got it, we've got to show strong incentives uh for others. And I think in general, the incentive to become interoperable or to adopt an open standard and be interoperable is when there's one big incumbent that all the small incumbents want to, you know, club together and take on. Uh, so, so, yeah, I think we've got to think smart and think scrappy and think about, you know, what are the use cases that are badly served today that we can go after? That was, you know, that was coil's mission originally was um, micro payments is a badly serviced use case. Uh, streaming payments for content is something that no one can do with existing payment rails. And so let's start a business that can do that as a way to, you know, push inter ledger forward as the payment method that solves that problem. Turns out it wasn't a big enough problem. It wasn't a problem that enough people were desperate to solve. Or, you know, there's, there may be other reasons why, why it didn't get the traction it needed to. But you know, we have an opportunity to learn from those mistakes and, and, and fix things. Um, and I think we should take that. So uh, yeah, that, that's, I'm going to stop there. I don't, I don't want to steal up too much time, but uh, we definitely are, our current thinking is, um, you know, getting live in the EU and the UK as soon as we can. Um, potentially getting live in South Africa where, where a lot of our team is based, uh, just because I think it could be an easy win for us with you know, our local networks and contacts. Um, but we're, you know, we're very keen to hear if others are making progress uh on getting a wallet set up that can hold real money. Uh, you know, that, that we can sort of connect the dots and make our payment pointers interoperable. Um, something to bear in mind is, you know, we started this in the days, uh, you know, when we were at Ripple and we built a lot of our early implementations and experiments on crypto. I think there's great evidence of why the crypto ecosystem is so fantastic for incubating payments based ideas. You don't need permission. You just, you know, deploy a node, you buy some cryptocurrency, you can transact with random people you don't even know. As soon as we step into the formal financial system, that will change it. So I think part of our mission, you know, with intelligence should be to try and find ways to break down those barriers. Even though we are now constrained by, you know, regulation and so on, and we're not alone in that. Like, I mean, financial inclusion is a mission that a lot of people are pursuing and in a lot of cases, the obstacles are regulatory or, or, or the like. So um, you know, whatever we can do for us at Fainbus, the mission is around user experience. How do we give people a digital wallet that's a pleasure to use, that's easy to use, that's interoperable with other wallets? Uh, without them needing to know things like bank account numbers or credit card numbers. Um, that's, that's what we focusing on as our, you know, as our wedge. And I think everybody's going to have to have a wedge. You, you can't, we can't expect people to adopt intelligence just because it's nice. Or because it does nice things. We, everybody who's in this community has to be building a sustainable business on top of intelligence and we've got to be leveraging, you know, On top of intelligence and we've got to be leveraging, you know, the, what we're doing together to grow this ecosystem. If, if, if it's not sustainable, um, you know, eventually, eventually uh, all of these projects will, you know, will, will fall by the wayside, just like Coiled it.
Awesome. Back to you, Chris.
Yeah, and I see Maria, you got your hand up?
Hi, this is so exciting. I um have been waiting for Fine Bus to happen for a long time. We come at this from the perspective of civil. I don't know how familiar you are with that. But like, we have experience in the, the difficulty of getting consumers to onboard digital wallets. And this is kind of what brought civil down uh in the crypto winter of twenty eighteen. There are so many people, we have use cases right now that people will immediately go for. That um, you know, getting people to use digital web pay for subscriptions for micro tipping. We built a micro tipping system and I know this stuff will work. In my opinion, Coil didn't make it because of the passive nature of the transactions. You didn't, you weren't able to leverage the excitement of readers and viewers. To make those payments happen in the heat of the moment when they're excited and wanna pay for something. This is what we've been working on. We have a lot of experience with it. We've been at it since twenty eighteen. I cannot wait to get this thing cranked up. But I will tell you, after many years of thinking about it. I'm convinced that what needs to happen is I need to be able to, as a crypto novice. I need to be able to use a debit card, put some funding in a wallet. And have that be able to pay for smart contracts for like, you know, work that is done through blockchain technology. That doesn't involve like having to, you know, do KYC at Coinbase with your passport. It's just really exhausting to people. And these regulatory problems, I just wanted to ask. All y'all who know the issues at Finebus, we went through so much difficulty, SEC difficulty, CFTC difficulty, like. All these problems that were purely regulatory and that made things difficult. So can you speak a little bit to like how these problems have been addressed and like why there's permission now? You know, in the US and what are the constraints on that permission for us moving forward?
So I can't speak specifically to um crypto because we made the decision upfront to, as you say, cater to the person who just wants to sign up and connect a debit card. Um, conversations with banks or licensed entities who you wanna work with. Become significantly easier if you tell them you're not gonna be doing anything with crypto. That's the reality of, of the current ecosystem. Um, you know, I have nothing against crypto. As I say, I think it's been incredible, you know, technology for incubating various things, incubating ideas, teaching people about money. Um, you know, uh, uh, all, all sorts of positive side effects. So, so our, our business decision was to stay clear of crypto. Um, and we knew it was gonna be harder to build what we wanna build. We were very tempted at stages to say, let's just use a USDC wallet, for example. Um, but the reality is, as soon as you want to interoperate with anybody else. You either in the crypto world or you're not. And if you're not, then you need to be working with a licensed uh entity. And they need to be doing user onboarding that meets their regulatory. Uh, you know, their regulatory requirements. And anyone you wanna interoperate with has to be confident that that's being done. So that's what it boils down to. Basically, there's no such thing as anonymous digital payments in, in, in the, in the fiat world. Uh, and, and I mean, that's a very sort of blunt uh simplistic view of it. But we can't send money to some imaginary anonymous person on the internet. We, we have to know who's on the other side and, and likewise, it, it would be the same the other way. So the, my guess is the standard procedure is gonna be if, if any two wallets in the intelligent ecosystem want to appear. They're either, they're either both already connected to a payment scheme uh that has handled all of that. So, you know, I, we're working with a bank, you're working with a bank, both those banks are connected to, I don't know. Uh, RTP in the US or uh, you know, Mastercard or something. And there's a way for us to just send each other money. And so that's fine. We can interoperate and we can, you know, send to each other's payment pointers. Um, or our banks get together and they do a due diligence on each other and they say, great. We're comfortable with each other's onboarding process. So I know if I send money to you. And all I know is it's going to you bank, that the actual beneficiary is somebody you have vetted and KYC. That's pretty much my understanding after, you know, a couple of years of trying to get this right, is that's what it boils down to. Is if a bank is not sending to someone that they have checked themselves. Then they only wanna send to another licensed entity who they trust has done the checks. That's, that's kind of what it boils down to. Um, so. And, and then, I mean, then there's nuance on top of that as well. So it's not as simple as just, okay, cool, we've now got a pipe between our two banks, we can just send money. There's a whole lot of risk stuff as well. So banks wanna know source of funds, they wanna know the reason for the transaction. They wanna know, you know, all sorts of additional stuff. And generally, the way they do that is they don't ask on a per transaction basis. They ask upfront, when you create your program with a bank, you say, you know, we wanna create, uh, we wanna create a digital wallet. This is, we want our users to be able to load funds into that wallet. We want them to be able to send funds to other people who have a wallet. We want them to be able to cash out. You give them the whole list of things you wanna be able to do. And they sign up your program. As soon as you want your users to be able to do something new. That has to be approved for the whole program. And, and sometimes there's some nuance where they'll say, okay, up to this limit for that use case or whatever. Uh, um, but that's, that's generally how we found it to be. And, and different partners and different providers will have different focus areas. So some will be happy to facilitate P two P, others are more interested in issuing cards. Like probably the most prominent use case in the US is you find banking as a service providers or banks. Who want to help you sign up users and give them a card so they can earn interchange revenue. That's the, the, the business model is as simple as that. Or sign up users so they can sell them credit. Um, remember the, the MAC partners always looking for, uh, they're, they're always looking for a, a, you know, a revenue stream out of whatever they're doing. So in our case, we partnered with a company that um historically were a remittance business. They've uh, they've come from a long history of remittances into, actually into Nepal. And then have grown from there and are licensed in Canada and bank accounts in the US. And they're, they're a, a fairly small, scrappy um business. But they bought into intelligence from the beginning. When we explained to them this idea that we wanna have. You know, we wanna be able to send people money through these payment pointers and we wanna make it easy to do cross-border. They, they were on board. So uh, I think if anyone wants to launch in the US. I'd be happy for you to speak to Mark Net and, you know, basically launch a copy of what we're doing. Uh, 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 that's great. Like, you know, a, as, as far as I'm concerned, like a rising tide raises all boats. Um, we're, we're, we're that, it, it would be super easy then to peer with you because we're both using the boat, the same licensed partner. Um, so that's sort of the process you've got to go through and it's, it's been painful. We, we went through four different FI partners before we finally got this right. We started with Mark Net. They didn't have the, they didn't have the capabilities we needed originally. We went to a different bank who got investigated by the CFPB uh for not doing enough due diligence on their partners' business uh, uh. Business plans. So, so not that they were doing anything wrong from a compliance perspective. The CFPB said to them, you are giving bank accounts and banking services to neo-banks and wallets. Who are not gonna be around for more than a year or two. They don't have a solid business plan. And that puts their customers in, at risk. And so that's what they were investigated for. So they paused all new programs. We could no longer go live. We moved to a new bank. The CFPB report came out, the new bank changed the risk profile of everyone they were talking to. So we were two months of due diligence down the line and they said, sorry, we, we're no longer doing programs for early-stage startups. Uh, after that CFPB report, things got a lot harder for, for anybody trying to do this. So it's a, it's a very difficult road. That's the reality, I'm afraid. And, 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 but I will caveat to say, I think the US is probably one of the hardest. It's, it's pretty mature in terms of people facilitating the ecosystem like banking as a service providers. But in Europe, you've got a whole different class of license with the e-money issuer and e-money distributor. You don't actually have to be a bank at all. So you can, you know, you can. There's a bit of background noise, but I'll, I'll try and talk over it. So, so in Europe, you, you should have an easier job. And then in each jurisdiction, it'll be different. Sometimes you need a bank, sometimes an e-money license, sometimes something like that. I know in India, there's a concept of payment banks. So unfortunately, like in each jurisdiction, somebody's gonna have to do your legwork to get set up. And, and, and I'm, I'm kind of, I've been chatting to Brianna and Alex and, and the team at ILF. I, I really think that's somewhere where the ILF can really help in a kind of coordinating function. And make sure we're trying to, you know, trying to seed one wallet in as many different jurisdictions as we can. And, and facilitate the connections between them, find the partners to, to do the, you know, cross-border settlement to make that all work.
And I'll put in a, and we're running short on time, so I'm gonna try to get to a few more questions, both if you have your. So if you got a question you'd like to speak in the video, go ahead and raise your hand now. I will say though, as you know, most obviously you are a wonderful community members have sort of been paying attention as we've gone forward. Many of you are grantees or involved in a grantee project. Um, this is why last year we came out with the financial services call for proposals. That's why even this time last year, we were making some slight pivots to looking at those other parts of the ecosystem. So I will highlight that the twelve grantees that we made um have just put their interim reports up on the community space. And there is some fascinating detailed look into versions of what Adrian is talking about, but in different places across the world. Whether that's in Uganda, whether that's in Mexico, or whether that's in Brazil. So we're, you know, so some of the stuff that Adrian speaks about, you know, I love how, you know, payments are hard. Open protocols and standards are hard, right? So it's a kind of a double dip on hard. And I think, you know, a lot of us, and I, I'm guilty of this as well, you know, a couple of years ago, when we kind of all raced into it. There's a lot of excitement, there's a lot of what can, what can happen, what can be possible. We're gonna turn the ad industry up on its ear, you know, we're gonna change the way people pay for content. Those things, you know, that, that excitement only lasts for so long. And then you kind of settle into the long game. These things, you know, you're taking on, you know, these big institutional things. Sort of sometimes it's systemic inequality, uh, global inequality, all kinds of things that regulatory environments, very real fears. All these things start to rear their head when you start to get, you know, more active, deeper into it. And I think we're in that stage now where we realize that those of us who believe in some of the core principles here and the values of this technology. And what affordances can have, we're settling in for the long game, right? This is gonna be protracted, there's gonna be bumps in the road. And so I think that's a big lesson that all of us can have as a community. And Jacob, I see you've got a yellow emoji hand, so I will turn the mic over to you.
Yep, hello. Uh, I'm Jacob Ford, I'm a developer for the Brickhouse Cooperative, uh, working with Brian. And um, we got the, or at least I got a Fine Boss invite and we've been having a lot of fun playing around with it. My question is, um, I, I know your next step is to implement um the invoice, invoice protocol for a simple, excuse me, simple payments. And I'm curious, um, will your banking partners um allow that to be kind of like a drop-in replacement for payment processors? Like Stripe and other checkout providers, or is that something that we would have to implement? And you would only be the, the payment recipient um for a USD-backed transaction?
Yeah, good question. So uh, we've already started that conversation uh. Six months ago, maybe, not quite. Um, being a uh facilitating consumer to merchant payments adds a little bit of complexity. I think I raised this on the, on the intellectual call this week. Uh, payment gateways do a whole lot of additional work when they process consumer payments. Like um, they've got to, they've got to vet the uh, the, the merchants that they onboard. Make sure they, they're, none of them are on sort of uh, are, are doing business that's not allowed by their bank partners or their payment system partners or whatever. There's, there's a bunch of extra fraud and risk stuff. Uh, Mark Net are very keen to help find a solution to that, to make that work. So we're certainly very keen to facilitate it. We've been building proof of concept and concept videos for e-commerce. Um, for the last few months already. And, and we definitely wanna be able to do it that, you know, you can uh pay with your payment pointer online. That's, that's the idea. Like, that's, that's a really, it's a use case we love. It, it really fits with our mission of, you know, making user experience better. Um, but what we're, our approach we're taking, which is maybe some kind of the other way around to, I think, historically. What we've done within the intelligent community a lot is to start at the user experience. Um, start by showing how the payment pointer checkout flow would work. And then build that into our product and maybe initially it only works if both accounts are with Fainbus. But then we go out to the market and say, look how amazing this user experience is. Wouldn't you wanna implement this? You know, wouldn't you Shopify or Stripe or whoever in the ecosystem acquiring bank? Wanna be able to accept payment pointers? And then we solve the harder problem after that of how do we wire the payment rails together under the hood to make that work? How do we get the, that like internet effect of, of, you know, the, the true intelligence vision? Um, so, yeah, look, I, I, I mean, our, our approach from day one has been to do things that way, more top-down than bottom-up. Um, and I'm kind of hoping we eventually meet in the middle from all the foundational work. Intelligence is already done on kind of the clearing protocols and so on. We, we get to a point where we do meet in the middle. Um, if we, if we try to build from the bottom up now, basically we're saying. Merchants and customers have to only be, you know, Fainbus customers, which, which kind of defeats the purpose of the whole interoperability thing. But that's definitely, yeah, the short answer, that's, that's definitely a use case we care about. And, and we've given ourselves a goal of Q, Q two this year to have it live. Um, uh, yeah, let's, let's see. All right, Tuan, I see your.
Fantastic, Tuan. Thanks.
Tuan, I see your hand. I'm gonna get to you in just a second. I'm just gonna hit a couple of quick ones from the text questions. One, I see, are there any plans to create uh such a standardized provider and integrate different wallets into it? Maybe build such standard, standardized web monetization provider after the torch is passed? The, the quick answer is that we don't know. Um, that's what's gonna be sort of, you know, at ILF and in the broader community and others. We looking into how we pick that up. I will say this is, is the, is that we're dedicated to being part of the solution. Um, that solution can manifest itself in many different ways and a multi- multiplicity of ways. But um, that's, that's our best commitment we can say now. Um, is that we do wanna advance this ecosystem and will be given this. And um, and it was already our intention to see more web monetization providers in this ecosystem before this. So this puts a little bit of fire underneath that, but it actually doesn't change a core direction to begin with. So don't know yet how that will look like, who that will be, what kind of programs we will run necessarily. But we, we do plan on being uh part of, of the way forward is the best answer.
I'll make a, a quick comment there as well, Chris. Like from a technical perspective. It's worth understanding that the coil extension is sort of fulfilling two roles today. It's there because web monetization is not built into browsers, but it's also there to be the web monetization provider. So it's the coil extension, but a big piece of the coil extension. In theory, could be run by anyone and then they could plug in on top of it as the provider. In an ideal world, all of that piece is built into the browser. And, and, and I think that's what Alex alluded to earlier, that we're getting positive signals from browser vendors that they may, they may consider doing that. So then what's left is if you're a web monetization provider, in other words, you're the, you're the entity that represents the, the user with the money. Or you're just the entity like in Coil's case that has the money and wants to distribute it over the web. You get to choose when to make payments and how much. That's, that's sort of, that's what you, that's the role you play. But the actual integration into the website and all of the, the emitting of events and parsing out of the payment pointer. And the communication with the website's wallet and, and all of that stuff, that, that standard. And I think it's very, it, it should be very easy today for somebody to go and download that stuff. It's all open source and just release another extension. That's exactly like the coil one, but it's a different provider. Um, so that may be, and I don't wanna, you know, dump this on Alex, but that may be the role the ILF has to provide initially. But that's a good topic to, I think, discuss as a next step.
So part of the webization provider roadmap or webization roadmap uh for this year was that we were gonna break up the extension. So Adrian put it very, very good. The extension is a two-for-one special right now. So part of our roadmap was to split that up so that the webization part was decoupled from the provider part. And open payments was designed with this, with one of the goals being, everybody should be able to be their own webization provider. So instead of signing up for a provider, you just plop in your Fimbus wallet, right? You'd connect your Fimbus wallet to the extension and you'll be able to choose the amount of payments you want to make on a website. Basically becoming your own webization provider. Now, that was on the roadmap for later in the year. And we're gonna look at the, that roadmap as soon as we, we release the, the new spec to see if we need to accelerate some of that work. If you need to shift some of that work into more usable components. But as Chris said, today, we have options and possibilities. We'll know more in the very short future, in the venue.
Well, we'll know some.
Um, just to be clear. All right. We only, I'm going to, Tuan, I am going to come to you in just a second. I do want to say that there's still some unanswered questions in the document. Um, we will go back and we've got written out answers. We can craft some new ones. We'll go and answer all of those questions. And when we circulate this video in the community, we'll also have that, those Q and A's. You know, written out in print so we can share those. So if you didn't get your question or issue answered, we will be going and picking those up. It was, you know, an hour is not going to be enough time. And in some ways it's too much time. So, um, but we will go and pick that up and get you answers. Um, and if, if you have your name attached to it or something like that, maybe we can tag you or just to make sure you, that you see it. Um, so we will make a commitment that we will pick up the rest of those questions or ones that we haven't fully addressed. Although I think broadly, we've covered lots of aspects of that. All right, Tuan.
All right. Uh, thank you, Chris. Uh, hi everyone. Uh, I'm Tuan from Snake Nation. And we are part of, uh, you know, the current financial services grant. Uh, and, uh, our project, we, we, we're really trying to solve the same problem that, you know, congratulations to Adrian and team, uh, that you're very really trying to solve, which is also providing, um, you know, uh, an intelligent capable wallet. Uh, my question really was, um, you know, around what the uh, mainnet, so to speak, uh, is going to look like now. I understand that, uh, you know, we had the three big players, which, you know, Coil was a part of, which was also GitHub and, uh, stronghold from no mistake. Uh, and you know, I understand Adrian, you, you guys are staying away from, uh, from crypto assets. I don't know if that is for now. Uh, and I would imagine that would, you know, complicate, you know, you guys pairing with, uh, uh, the network that, um, you know, stronghold and, uh, and GitHub are on. So now I might be asking this wrong. So, you know, let me take a bit here and you just check.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good question. No. So, um, I think right now, the network consists of uphold, uphold, sorry, not stronghold, uh, uphold, GitHub and uphold GitHub and Coil. Um, although the reality is only Coil can send payments on that network. Uphold and GitHub can only receive. So at least for now, the easiest way for us to get back to something like that is for us to be able to send to Apple and GitHub. So we're already talking to them to try and make that work. And the fact that they are crypto wallets is not a problem in and of itself because they're both um, licensed, they both do very comprehensive KYC on the users and so on. And we wouldn't settle with them in crypto. We would just settle with them in USD. So both of them have, uh, operations in, um, it, well, GitHub don't as far as I know, but, but uphold have a license in the US. They're fully licensed, I think in, in most of the US states. So we would be able through Mark Net and our bank to be able to settle uphold and send them payments. So we've got a whole phased approach to peering with uphold, which we've been discussing with them for six months. Um, and, and the idea would be that first prize is for us, you, you sign up for a Fainbus wallet. You put some money in it and you send to an uphold payment point and that works. It's, that's simple, straightforward. So that means anybody who gets a business account with us can be a web monetization provider and all of those uphold payment pointers out there on the web continue to work as expected. Um, GitHub is a little more complicated because they're not set up in the US, but we're talking to NA and, and they're, they're a little more flexible technically, but a little more, more challenging, uh, you know, from a business and covenant side. So we, we definitely want to get that working and, and Brianna and, and Alex and the team are helping a lot to apply some pressure. Um, you know, we're doing what we can to get them moving. It's, it's, it's not a, um, we've got to make it a priority for them. So I think if anybody here is building products that's very dependent, where you have users that have uphold payment pointers and you can persuade someone at uphold or send them an email or whatever and say, hey, like we really want our uphold payment pointers to be compatible with Fainbus, you know, that wouldn't hurt. Uh, but that's, that's the plan from our side, right? And then the, the phases are we, we get sending working. And then ideally with Rafiki, uh, production ready, it becomes a lot easier for those guys to implement the full suite. They can do, they can do sending to us. They can support open payments. They can support everything else. And, and the, the really easy lift is us just being able to send to them and they don't have to do too much extra work. It's a, it's a new settlement arrangement and, and that's it. Not much technical.
Okay. All right. Uh, and I'll just one, one last question there. So is there going to be like, um, you know, sort of like a checklist or, um, I would say, say for anyone, anyone else who's trying to peer with, uh, you know, whatever that new main network is going to look like. Uh, I, I, I do understand right now that if you, if you're integrating through magnet, maybe they could kind of like handle that. Um, no, I'm just thinking, is there going to be like some kind of like a checklist or I don't know what, what better way to use, you know, just like all of the different steps that kind of, uh, if you're going to be, if you're going to build your own private, uh, for lack of a better word, uh, IOP network with your group of users or ecosystem, like what we're trying to do, for example, and then go out and look for people to peer with, uh, you know, is there like a set of requirement that we should kind of be on the lookout and know that, you know, before going to production, we need to check these boxes for us to be able to peer with, uh, you know, this network, for example.
Yeah, it's, it's not a technical problem. It's a legal and compliance problem, like all of those checkboxes are basically. Um, and so, so what I explained earlier to Maria about like the process that we went through, it's going to be something like that is my guess. So, you know, if you've got a wallet and you've got users who can deposit money and you're holding fiat currency for them, that's probably in an FBO account at a bank somewhere or it's e-money with an e-money issuer somewhere, that entity, you need to go to them and you need to say, hey, this is what we now want to do, right? We want our users to be able to send money to these guys over here. And they will, and you need to start a conversation about how do we, how do we settle that? How do we facilitate that payment flow of funds? Uh, and, and it's going to have to, we're going to have to work with those licensed entities to help us make this happen. And I think every time we do this, we'll learn more and I'm hoping, yeah, we can come up with a playbook of some sort. And, and that the ILF will, will be able to help facilitate that a bit and say, cool, here's the playbook. And we keep making it better and fleshing it out and, and, and so on. Um, that's, yeah, I think that's the, the best we've got for now.
All right. We are, thank you. All right. We are at time and I want to respect that everyone gave us an hour. Um, just a couple of quick things. We will be going back and answering stuff in the document. We actually did a pretty extensive Rafiki update, including a demo of the new test net in yesterday's ILP community call. I will put the link to that call, um, in the stuff that we distribute about this call as well. So if you want to double click on that, I would, I would suggest it, that the test net, which should be coming out in the next few months, is going to be pretty exciting and, and start to let people play. I think we were calling it a playground, Rafiki playground. I think that's an app name for it. Um, I want to, you know, this is just the beginning of this conversation. Please leave anything you else you want in the public note taking doc. If you're interested in being part of a smaller working group, looking at some of these issues, you know, put your name and your interest down on there. Uh, I think one of the things that we might do coming out of this is, is have a little bit of a, you know, subcommittee or subgroup that is kind of looking at community thoughts about the future of web monetization. So just name your interest. You're not committing anything, but something that you might want to be followed up on about. Um, and with that, a deep gratitude and thank you for being on this journey with us before, during and after. We're sorry for the disruptions, but I think what we've talked about today, some of the news, some of the updates and some of the look at where this is going is I think that this ultimately is a, you know, there's a lot of momentum going forward. And, and like I said, and like many of you said, this is hard. Um, and it's not just hard technically, it's hard socially, it's hard communication wise, and it's hard regulatory and compliance. So let's just all get back to work. So thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Chris.